Thank you, and good afternoon everybody and welcome to the Ipswich Central redevelopment Committee number five of 2021, today the 10th of June. Noting that all councillors are in attendance except for councillor Kate Kunzelman, she is an apology and has sought a leave of absence, I propose to move that. Is there somebody happy to second that? Thank you councillor John Eak. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda today?
No.
I note there is no business outstanding, so we will move to item number one, which is the confirmation of minutes of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee number four, 2021, on the 13th of May. I'll move that the minutes be confirmed. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Milligan.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put that to the vote. Notice that's unanimous? Encouraged, thank you. Sorry, having a moment. Okay, let's move to item number two, which is the Ipswich Central revitalisation stakeholder engagement. The reports concerning the public and stakeholder engagement that will be undertaken as part of the Ipswich Central revitalisation project. Can I have the relevant council officer please?
Good afternoon, Erin Marchant, project manager for Ipswich Central. This is a report concerning the stakeholder engagement which is about to commence on the Ipswich Central revitalisation project. We're about to enter a very exciting time in the project and I wanted to explain to you a little bit more about the engagement that will be happening with the community. So to start the process, we are going to be commencing door knocking next week. We are going to be visiting the businesses in the two areas with the place plans, which is the Ipswich Centre core and the top of town precincts. In addition to that, we will be driving traffic to our online engagement platform through Shape Your Ipswich and there'll be an Ipswich Central business briefing happening on the 22nd of June. These will be the first tastes that the community probably will have heard about the Ipswich Central revitalisation in a little while. So in addition to that, we will be doing six community pop-up events. These will be happening all around Ipswich Central. So we're doing the art gallery, we'll be also looking at the showgrounds, the Ipswich Jets, we're working with Riverlink, and then also tying that into the last community event, which will be to coincide with the Spark Festival. So this, we will be setting up a Spark Lounge. We are going to be encouraging businesses to get involved with us and showcase their foods and their services, and basically just really have an opportunity to hear the ideas from the community and make sure that we're capturing all that information. The aim for the next part of the consultation following that is to generate some interest from the community. We're looking for proactive and passionate community members to form part of our partnerships working groups. So this will be for both of the precincts that I've already mentioned, and we're looking for between about 10 people to be part of that. This will be an application process and we really want to have those people who are going to drive and get behind this project. Internally, we are having an internal working group of about 12 people. Sorry, I just finished off. We start that tomorrow, our internal working group, we will continue to meet on that. We are looking at different governance models and we are looking at what's going to be working best for our council and the community together. To inform this governance model, we have been doing some research with different councils around Australia.
Yep.
So with that, we've been talking to ACT, we've also spoken to Swimmer Regional Council, other organisations such as Main Street and Town Team Movement to be able to inform our decisions.
Ms Marchant, may I ask, I applaud this and I think it's great that you're doing the door knocking because I think it's been a missing link for this council. Whenever I've been business door knocking over the years, and certainly since becoming mayor as well, there's a view that, you know, that council isn't consulted, they'll go out and inform, hey, we're doing this, but not actually stop and listen. So I'm very keen and I know it's probably an operational thing to see what your script is and what you're doing, but I hope, you know, the council officers I know who are very passionate about this are listening and taking on board. I look forward to seeing the feedback from this work.
It's actually a very important part of the process and I don't think we can really proceed with this project without it.
Thank you, Ms Marchant. Is there any learnings that, you know, we can highlight or speak to at the moment from other councils?
Look, there is definitely some learnings. A lot around the governance structure is going to be a big topic of conversation specifically with our first internal working group tomorrow. We want to make sure that that balance between the partnerships with the community and how we run things with inside council is balanced and we can work together. So there are several different models that I have heard from different councils and we need to work together to find out which model we think is going to be most suitable.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other questions? No, thank you. I'll now move to the actual recommendations, which is A, that the report be received and the contents noted, and B, recommendation A is compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration. I guess in accordance with discussions around B earlier today throughout committees. Should we, given this is just a report for noting, should we be removing B?
Yes, please Chair, there's no need to proceed with that recommendation.
Okay, so now open it up for discussion. Thank you Mayor.
Oh, you've moved it, I'll second it if...
Oh, sorry. I'm going to rush again. Can I have a mover please for the recommendation A only? Thank you Mayor Harding, seconda, thank you councillor John Eak. Now open up for discussion.
I guess I just asked for the organisation. Obviously, we're looking at, in this piece of vital work that we're doing for our CBD, we're also looking at, you know, our community reference groups and how that's, what's going to happen there, how do we, I guess, better utilise resources and yet, I guess, not waste people's times as well. So I'm just very keen to see how this is going to be shaped because that could be part of those reference groups that we use as well. And to also make sure that the elected reps are very much part of that as well is going to be an important part of, because they ring us anyway, for things like that. So I guess I'm just cognisant, I don't know, Chair and CEO of what this is going to look like and is it going to be formed part of, however we reshape the community reference groups going into the future, I'm not sure. Because I will look at having one with an economic, you know, view and perspective. Well, it might be something that Ms Marchant can...
Yes. So with the community reference groups, I know they're set up for a specific purpose. With these working groups, these are more going to be more of a partnership. So they are going to be slightly different to the community reference groups that we currently have, but they are going to take on those elements of the economic, the cultural, the social, all together as one. So these particular groups, this is a model we're going to try, we're going to test, make sure it's going to be functioning and working and have its own purpose.
Thank you. Chair, as part of discussion, obviously the direction of community references will be up to the councillors and what we do and we acknowledge that that does need to change and we've had a number of workshops on that. I guess what I'm looking to Ms Mattson as to, as we're having more community and business focused as opposed to structured on our committees, being more accessible. My concern is that we're going to head with the whole of the consultation but not within the framework of what we're doing with all the other consultation that we're doing in council.
Sure, Mayor. So Cat Mattson, manager of economic and community development. I think there's a couple of key distinctions here in levels of formality, levels of consultation and levels of project. So right now, the piece of engagement that Erin's just reported on in the context of Ipswich Central is engaging local traders and stakeholders' input in the informing of a positioning framework for Ipswich Central. What's the collective vision that we're aiming for? My suspicion, and it's only a suspicion right now, but my suspicion is from those conversations and from some of those more informal groups that will be formed, we will then have a pool of people who will be quite interested in forming the CRGs or the reference groups or the advisory groups that we're creating. My experience over many years in these kind of projects across different councils is you stand up some groups just for specific projects. So for example, the groups that we're currently talking about with Top of Town and Ipswich Centre core are more like trader groups and we actually want them to continue to come together so they continue to be proud of Top of Town. And they continue working together on sweeping their front porches, working together on activations, et cetera. Wider than that though, there will be economic development advisory boards, there might be a wider Ipswich Central, there might be a wider strategic group. We're certainly talking with Laura and the engagement team as well as with elected officials to make sure that, one, they're not diverging and two, they're all working together. But these particular groups are specifically trader groups for Ipswich Central and aren't designed to replace or overtake those other wider groups.
Okay. May I ask, one of the things that I feel, it mentions a strategic advisory project working group. Are you involved with that or who should I? What is it?
What's the strategic project advisory group? So that's the internal one?
Right.
Yep, so that is a group of internal council officers, making sure that all of the projects that are currently within the catchment of Ipswich Central are being considered. Because in our normal day-to-day operations, there will be conversations in different departments about the proposed stadium, about the Woolen Mills, about parking, about transport. So the internal advisory group is to ensure that we're catching all different projects that inform Ipswich Central.
The left hand knows what the right hand's doing.
Totally.
Yeah, absolutely. And councillor Kunzelman, and I recently attended an information session with Ms Mattson, and that was a great opportunity for us to understand that this piece, this little piece of work with regard to getting all the relevant departments within council on board, understanding, so we're all on the same page. And that's not to say that everyone's singing the same tune. There's, this is what we want. We want healthy debate and input from the various different council units.
And this is what we're talking about when we're talking about the governance structures for within council to inform the revitalisation and then the ongoing operation of Ipswich Central. The precinct revitalisation project is so much more than just a piece of streetscaping, for example, and that's often what we think about when we think of place making. But this is defining how we continue to attract, nurture and build the right businesses, the right social activities, the right cultural activities, the right residential activities, to have Ipswich Central be what it needs to be, not just for now but for the next 25 years. One of the key, sorry Mayor, just one of the key barriers to that is not only the not right hand not knowing what the left hand sometimes, what's happening in council, but also having those outcomes aligned. So as an example, not saying that this is true, but I've seen it in other jurisdictions, as an example, there might be a plan to change parking policy, which actually completely undermines the objectives of lingering in the city. So it's just making sure that we are literally all working towards the same outcomes.
I guess my main thing is that the elected representatives are involved. We don't want this piece of work to go ahead without us being very much involved with this as well.
Yeah, for sure. And to reassure you on that, Mayor, I have regular updates with councillor Doyle, councillor John Eak, from an economic development perspective. We can certainly brief more often as well. There's another report coming to this committee next month as well.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to, you know, acknowledge the importance of this piece of work being front of mind for each department within council so we all achieve the desired outcome. A lot, I see it very similar to our waste directive. It is now sort of immersed within council and it's great when it rears its head when we're talking about a lot of different issues presented to council, to the elected reps, not necessarily within the planning department. Council officers are across it, aware of it, and it's front of mind with everything they're doing. And that's what we need to happen here, buy-in from everyone to move forward.
Yep, and the communication.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, so any further discussion? We might put the matter to the vote. All those in favour, confirming that is unanimous? Encouraged, thank you. Moving on to item number three, it's a report concerning investment options for the Commonwealth Hotel. Can I call on the relevant council officer to come down please?
Good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. Sean Mattigan, acting general manager of infrastructure and environment. Can we provide a summary?
Yes, please.
Certainly. So this relates to the Commonwealth Hotel. There was an article in the Queensland Times today, which was good to see the publicity for it. As it says in the report, it was built in 1910, was a very popular hotel in its day, even as recently as I understand it, to the 80s and 90s. Council purchased the building in 2014. When it purchased the building at that time, it was effectively uninhabitable, not fit for people to be able to use that building. We had significant issues with the foundations and effectively the building was collapsing. The decision at that time by the council was made, I think, and my understanding, was made in relation to preserving the heritage of the city. As anyone knows, when it comes to heritage construction and restoration, it is a significantly expensive thing to do. So we have spent a significant amount of money to bring the Commonwealth Hotel to its current state. And its current state is, it is stable, it has been put back together, but it is currently not in a habitable state. So still further funds are required to be spent to bring it up to a use that could be either, a couple of options there. So the two options for use of it are, one, as commercial tenancy or a small bespoke hotel offering, so a small bar kind of a style, or alternatively to extend the footprint out so that it is a significant commercial hotel. The report identifies three options that are available. One is to do nothing and that's to leave it in its current state. And that would be a state where it would not have a tenant in it. It would require council to expend funds to maintain the building and it wouldn't add anything to the activation or the heritage of the city. And I don't consider that it would necessarily meet the needs of the community and the expectations of when you preserve that heritage to be able to put that building back to use. The second option is to spend approximately $2 million on it to bring it up to a habitable state where it could be used for a commercial fit-out such as a lawyer's office or an architect's office, or alternatively a small commercial boutique pub, kind of offering, whiskey bar. Of significance with option two, we've been out in the market testing it in amongst local operators and broader to see if there is commercial interest in anyone taking over a tenancy of that nature. And two, at this point, we haven't had any success in identifying a successful prospective tenant. That is not to say we may not find one in the future because the building has just been completed and it is a much more marketable product as it is at the moment to be able to take prospective tenants through. However, that isn't what we would consider the best investment model for council. The third option is the one that we are recommending, which is an extension of the hotel to increase the footprint. The third option is the one that we are recommending, which is an extension of the hotel to increase the footprint, which requires an additional further $5 million in investment. The positives on this one are that we have been in extensive negotiations with a prominent hotel operator that has knowledge of the Ipswich market. And they have indicated to us that the extension of the hotel and the commercial offering that it would provide will actually be really effective in the Ipswich market and will be a commercial success. So there's a confidential document there that talks about the terms. But what we are looking at effectively is up to a 20-year lease on that particular asset and a return on investment period of approximately 10 years on the investment that we're seeking at this time. What we are doing at the moment in the report refers to some modelling with Queensland Treasury Corporation. And some of the stuff that they are looking at and what they are doing will relate more around the Commonwealth Hotel to the ownership and operating model. So it isn't so much in terms of the commercials. So the commercial details that we're working out with the commercial hotel operator will be reviewed by Knight Frank and the commerciality of those terms will be tested. But what QTC will look at for us is looking at the valuation. So the valuation you have at present with an extension of the hotel and a lease of a 20-year period is approximately $8.6 million. That will be subject to change as the precinct evolves. But what we are looking at is what is the best model for council to get a return on the investment that it's making, that has made to date and that we are proposing to make at this time. It is an argument to say that the funds expended to date are in fact a heritage cost that is associated to preserve what is a very significant part of the city's heritage, given the number of buildings that unfortunately are no longer with us, particularly through that Nicholas Street and Brisbane Street precinct. Then you have the additional cost of the $5 million, and that's a commercial investment, is what I view that as. We believe in the very short term, we will get an agreement for lease, which is a contractually binding arrangement with, as I said, an experienced and known hotel operator in Ipswich Market, who will take over the ownership, or sorry, the operating of the hotel. They are proposing to, sorry, invest significant funds on their own in the range of $2 to $3 million to bring it up to a commercial hotel offering. So it is not just council expending this money. This operator believes that, believes in the precinct, believes in what we're trying to achieve with the Commonwealth Hotel, and is confident enough to invest a significant amount of their own funds in bringing this back to life as a living and breathing and important part of the Ipswich Central redevelopment project. The options indicated there have all of the finances that are available and the commercial terms that are proposed with the proposed tenant. And the approval by council to expand an additional $5 million on the Commonwealth Hotel will enable us to have it up and running as a very large and we consider successful operation by Easter of 2022. This is important because it will be a significant attractor of people back into the CBD. The offering will be fairly unique in terms of what it provides in terms of this older portion of the city. And we believe it will bring a lot of people back into the CBD, which will benefit not only ourselves and the investments we're making in the retail assets throughout the precinct and the civic space in Toulma Place, but also other businesses within the precinct. So in summary check, that's where we're at. So our recommendation is to go with option three. And then the QTC modelling will inform the council as to what is the actual best ownership model for that. So do we retain the asset and do we hold it for the term of the 20-year lease and recoup a significant amount of funds for the rate payers based on the rental agreement? Do we hold for three years, recoup in a circular $1 million and then sell it? That is the modelling that QTC will do to inform council. In terms of the investment that we're asking for here, $5 million, they have an approximate valuation of the asset of about $8.6 million. We would consider that this would be a very easy asset to divest. You would have a very strong tenant that is in there on a very long-term lease. So from a commercial perspective, it would be a pretty attractive asset to purchase. So whilst we're asking for an additional $5 million here, there is the potential that once we have a tenant secured, and if council has so decided, we could recoup that $5 million pretty much within, you know, 12 to 24 months, if that was the best decision. But that will have to be informed, as I said, by the modelling work that QTC are doing for us to make sure that we optimise the return on investment for the right clients.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I just have a question. You mentioned that we went to market to seek out any commercial interest in the existing footprint, as I call it. I have had members in the community say to me, it was a success, it was, you know, historically a successful pub under that current footprint. Are you able to speak to what may have changed? And maybe it's a question for yourself or Mr Hepburn, what's changed in the market? I understand, you know, it's a very long time ago that the old Murphy's Hotel, for instance, was a successful establishment. What's so different that requires and warrants the extra space, noting that it's going to cost a significant amount of additional investment by council?
In short, the market and what the market expects, you know, from a commercial offering has changed. So the days of the old public bars, you know, are numbered. If you look across the state in particular, those small hotels, you know, are going by the wayside. The community expects a lot more. They don't want to just go and sit at an old bar and get drunk, you know, and enjoy the company with their friends. They want an offering that has entertainment, has music, has good food offerings, potentially has gambling opportunities. That is what the community looks for. You look at, I like using the perfect example, you know, of the Prince Alfred Hotel, the PA Hotel. I mean, it wins the awards, you know, hands down, year in, year out, as one of the best pubs, you know, in Queensland, if not the country. And you look at the offering that they provide there, and it is all of those things that I have just said. The original footprint of it does not allow for all of those offerings in the one location. That is why, as I said, this is very successful. And known commercial operator of hotels has said, if we want this to succeed as a commercial hotel or pub, that it needs to provide all of those, which requires the footprint to be expanded. And in summary, that is, that is what has changed. The expectations of the market and what you get in that sort of a, an offering, you know, has changed and their standards are much higher than what they used to be.
Thank you. Just another question. If we park for one minute the commercial hotel and the deals we're looking at and return on investment and the whole commerciality of it, aside from that, what, what does it mean for the wider precinct as far as our leasing strategy goes and the impact it would have? If we can secure a key tenant being a large hotelier and if we did agree to the extension, what are the flow-on effects for attracting other prospective tenants?
Significant. So in the precinct and the retail strategy that we are rolling out, and Mr Hepburn will speak to shortly, the thing that makes a retail or any precinct of this nature succeed is having anchor tenants. So what we are proposing, as you know, we're in the market at the moment for a, running a tender process in relation to a cinema offering, which is the key anchor tenant, certainly in that sort of middle portion and top end of Nicholas Street. As the precinct comes down and runs around into Union Place, we will have a number of food and beverage offerings there. But none of them are what we would consider a key anchor tenant. A commercial offering of the nature of the, that's on offer here, that we're in negotiations with, provides that very strong anchor tenant, with a very strong lease covenant. You know, so a 20-year commitment to being in that precinct will attract a lot of the, a very wide demographic, I suppose, of the community at all hours of the day with that sort of an offering. So what it does for us is it helps with our night-time economy. It helps with the weekend economy, brings residents and community members back into the precinct at night and on the weekends. But it will also obviously service the needs of the CBD area during the day. So this is a, if we can secure this tenant, which we believe we can with this investment, this is a very, very big piece of the puzzle, an important piece of the puzzle in making sure that we achieve our objective of an activated city heart again within the Nicholas Street precinct. And also protecting the investment that we've made thus far and that we are potentially going to be making in the future in those retail assets regarding a cinema offering and the food and beverage. So we believe this is critical. The reason we have brought this forward now is we are at a stage in negotiations with the prospective tenant where we believe we can progress to an executed agreement for lease in a very timely manner, which does a couple of things. As I said, secures an anchor tenant for us. It also improves market confidence in the precinct to say that once we announce this operator, who as I said is a very successful and well-known operator in this industry, it's a show of confidence in the precinct, which will help us with our marketing and our leasing strategy for the other tenancies across the precinct.
Certainly within the smaller precinct that is Union Place, I think, I can absolutely see the enormous benefits by moving ahead for Metro B, which is obviously well and truly under construction and the search continues to attract the right tenancy mix there.
Yeah, and the conversations we've had with the prospective tenants on Metro B, which are food and beverage offerings, very much so see a successful Commonwealth Hotel as part of their business model. They will benefit from that as well. Because it is about, you know, creating a precinct, a look and a feel and a vibe, if you will, for a precinct, so that it's activated, so there's people going from one venue to another and just really bringing people back into that precinct. And the Commonwealth Hotel is a key part of that. So in our view, you not only have the benefit of restoring and saving some of the city's history, an 111-year-old hotel, but also, you know, protecting our investment and creating a CBD where people will come and spend time in.
Okay. Sorry, just one final question from me. When we talk about divesting this particular asset, being the Commonwealth Hotel, if, assuming we've completed the extension, we attract the large hotelier that we think we will, and then we decide that we do want to divest, who are the likely prospective owners to be? Is it, could it be the operator or is it likely to be?
It certainly could be. So there has been a, some conversations around that. However, under the provisions under the Local Government Act and Regulations, for us to divest that, we would require to auction that off to the highest bidder. So we have the ministerial exemption that relates to the leasing of assets in the precinct. But that doesn't cover the divestment or the selling of those assets. So, you know, yet again with everything, this would be a very sought-after asset. And it would be, if we do choose the divestment model, whether it's in a year's time or five years' time, an auction-type model would always be best to actually ensure that we achieve the greatest return on investment because we would have multiple bidders, no doubt.
Yeah. And as you say, QTC are modelling that piece of work for us at the moment to hold or to divest. So I'm looking forward to having those discussions. Anyone else have any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, before you move to the recommendations, may I suggest two amendments to B, just from a...
I was getting to that.
June 2022, okay.
It should be 20, yeah. Okay. So if I can move, oh, sorry.
And we usually put, if we're asking for delegation of money, we should be putting it in the motion. So whether we take out the word in B, the word requirement, instead of requirement, have of $5 million, would that, so be council endorsed the additional capital budget of $5 million for the proposed? Would that be a better reflection?
Yep.
Of $5 million? In June 2021? Sorry, Chair, thank you.
No, no, no. Thank you for doing that housekeeping for me. And while we're at it, do we, no, we will be leaving C, CEO? In this instance? Okay. So if we now move on to the recommendations, that will be, A, council proceed with option three for an extension to the Commonwealth Hotel, subject to the execution of the agreement for lease with a prospective lessing. B, that council endorse the additional capital budget of $5 million for the proposed Commonwealth Hotel extension and inclusion of this funding requirement in the 2021-2022 budget to be adopted by council in late June 2021. And C is recommendations A and B are compatible with human rights and relevant human rights have been given proper consideration in accordance with Section 58, one of the Human Rights Act 2019. Can I ask somebody to move the recommendations, please? Thank you, Mayor. And a second, though. Thank you, councillor Johnic. Open it up for discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. I think, like yourself, I'm very much looking forward to the modelling from Queens and Treasury Corp. In particular, too, I think it's because we're investing or spending public monies. There are additional obligations that we have, including value capture. So we look at not just a return on the investment, but we also look at what amenity it provides our community, but also the benefits to the businesses around the area as well and the community around the area. So I think that's, I'm very interested to see the modelling that comes back from QTC. And I was very heartened to also see, I know it wasn't confidential, but you spoke about it, Mr Madigan, so I'll say it too, the fact that the proposed tenant is also investing $2 to $3 million of their own hard-earned cash in this as well. It's not just public monies as well.
And I think you've made a very important point, Mayor. You know, I was speaking with Mr Madigan about the benefits for Metro B and our leasing strategy and prospective tenancies. But quite rightly, you've pointed out that it goes much wider than that. And it's our businesses, Top of Town, Downtown and all around Ipswich. And to have that night-time activation once again in our CBD certainly will be quite exciting.
We've, you know, in the previous committee, we talked about the flavours of Ipswich, you know, the amount of people attracted from outside of Ipswich as well. So it's attracting those people here. And also just to reiterate to residents, too, that as part of a budgeting process, we've been having workshops, what, two days a week for months? And this has obviously been heavily discussed in those briefing sessions as well. So it's not something we've just seen today. This is something that we have spent a fair bit of time on.
Absolutely. We're not taking this decision lightly. And, you know, that's reflected in the number of briefing sessions and information sessions that we've requested from council officers. And I commend them on providing that deep level of information that we've been asking for. We have the benefit of having our own little in-house accountant as elected representative in councillor Johnic. So she's been of, you know, enormous benefit and, you know, support in helping us understand the numbers. So we're certainly doing our own due diligence. Councillor Milligan, did you have some comments?
Thank you, Chair. It has been covered quite extensively and well by members of committee and yourself. And I concur absolutely with the statements that have been made. And for me, there's particularly the risk of not as opposed to the risk of do.
Yeah, you know.
Well raised, councillor.
Well raised. Just in summary through you, Chair, I guess it's, yeah, it's not a decision that we've taken lightly. But given the cooperation and co-funding with this recommendation that the officers have put up and then, you know, the respected but confidential prospective tenant, you know, and their history in the market. And then this anchor tenant as such for that, the part of our CBD redevelopment, I think there's no other option but to approve what the recommendations have been put forward to us, so.
Well put, councillor Johnic. So we might move to the vote then. All those in favour? Noting that's unanimous and carried. We now move to item number four, which is the Nicola Street Precinct Retail Subproject Steering Committee Report, May twenty twenty-one. Can I call the relevant council officer down, please? Thank you, Mr Hepburn. Would you mind giving us an update on the retail, um, the the, sorry, the leasing program and any other developments within the precinct generally?
Yes, of course. James Hepburn, Chair of Retail Sub projects, and good afternoon, Mayor Chair and Councillors. Uh, in terms of, I refer to the uh the deal status table um within the report. Um, the numbers haven't significantly changed from last month, and we have pending approvals with two extra deals. I refer to them as being um beauty bar, and I can now talk more openly to the other one being the Commonwealth Hotel. Both of those have now been approved through the office of the CEO and into the legal team to be progressed um along with the the with the others. So that brings our total um in with legals and every essentially heads to the thirteenth, which is good. And gives us good momentum going forwards. I think previous approval also adds to the weight of our negotiating powers with further tenants and attracting a better quality of covenant to the precinct. The other part of the leasing that's ongoing at the moment is super venue. And significantly chunk of that being the cinema expression of interest process that we're running with our procurement colleagues. We've just completed um a couple of weeks of quite detailed work relating to the the legal status of that and preparing for the R F T, the submissions. Um, that will go out to the market, I hope, in the coming weeks. And we'll then go into a thirty-day period awaiting for submissions from operators in the cinema industry. So we've got to quite an exciting stage there, and the process that we've outlined here should lead us in through um June, July, August in assessing these submissions, selecting a preferred operator, uh, and then into a council um decision-making process somewhere around September, October. Uh, the only other things I'll probably bring to note are around the construction and and some of the design changes we've made recently. And there's been two design changes um that relate to the scheme, particularly on the Metro B side of things. We've found twenty-eight square meters of space within Metro B and that was previously allocated as a seating area. Um, but having learnt a lot more about that part of the precinct, we realised it's not going to be very good for seating, and we've managed to internalize it into the scheme. Uh, I mention that because that's actually turned into now twenty-eight square meters of lettable space. So that's income we hadn't banked um this time last year or the year before. So that's been a good move for us. And the other side of, um, is more around compliance. We've noted that the previous Metro B mall was not compliant for D D A access. So the gradients coming in and out were quite steep, and we've looked to change that so it falls in line with them with council requirements and make sure that actually what we're building is accessible to to all of the community. Uh, and then finally, um, just following on from the decision made around the um repeal. It's enabled us um to continue to meet our obligations with our contractor, Hutcheson Builders. And in doing so, we've obviously avoided um some ongoing construction, cost and risk, which has been fantastic. And it's now enabling our scheme to continue with its design and and build program as intended, which is great news.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr Hepburn? No, thank you. So I will now move to the recommendation, um, A, that the May twenty twenty-one Retail Subproject Steering Committee Report be received and contents noted. Uh, I note that recommendation B, uh, with regard to the Human Rights Act, we probably can delete that one again. So we have the one recommendation. Can I have somebody move that recommendation, please? Thank you, councillor John Ink. And a seconder, thank you, councillor Milligan. I will now open up for discussion. No discussion on the floor?
Uh, just quickly, I attended the um Retail Subproject Steering Committee at its um last sitting and, um, and and just want to um say how fabulous it is for the the detail of work that is getting done um when it comes to um these leasing projects and that no stone has been left unturned. So I just wanted to reiterate that confidence um in in our teams.
Hmm. I I agree, councillor John Ink, that the knowledge and understanding um that we gain from attending those subcommittees um is is really important, and it just highlights just how complex. And I completely understand that there's some members in the community that are frustrated um by the time it 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 is taking down there to get buildings completed and and tenants in place and attracting a cinema. But this is such a complex project um within um the confines of, you know, the local government and environment. Um, so, and there's so many moving parts all the time. So, no, it's great um knowledge and explanation that we get from that uh subcommittee, and thank you to the committee for uh allowing us to participate. We might put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number five, the final item on today's agenda, that's the Nicola Street Precinct uh Communications Engagement and Events Report, May twenty twenty-one. Could I have the council officer down to give us an update, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor Chair and councillor. Karen Sutton, Communications Engagement and Events Manager for Nicola Street Precinct.
Thank you. Um, just, um, if you wouldn't mind giving us a very brief update on um what's been happening down there, in particular last night, um, what, you know, challenging weather on the night of a huge event like that, and there was a lot of excitement in the community um about watching um live State of Origin on the big screen um with with food and and drink available. And then, of course, we get uh the Westerlies and that cold snap. How did it go?
Uh, look, I think it was an event that was really well-received and the community, you know, it was our first opportunity to really share the, you know, some of the assets that we have, uh, that we have. So, um, we did have, obviously, the weather was not in our favour. It was a little brisk, uh, so jumpers and blankets were required. Um, but look, I think the turnout was was really positive. Um, we had a number of food trucks that were, uh, there available for pizzas, hot dogs, food, things like that. Uh, the Civic Centre supported us really well. We had a licensed bar, um, and we had some beautiful staging and decor around. So, um, I think that was just the first, the first go. The weather will be much kinder to us, as will the score for Queensland for the next round.
Thank you. I I hope so.
Yes, absolutely. Um, but no, it was a really well-received event. Great for us to learn more about the space and the opportunities that we have. Uh, and I think we can only continue from there.
Yeah, and and a great um point, you know, great opportunity to learn about the space and the people that attend and how we can activate. Each and every time we have an event down there, there are new learnings. I, I'm
Definitely.
You know, a layperson, um, and and each event I attend down there, you you notice the different types of uh groups in the community that are attending and and how how each of them want to use the space. So, um, great work. Thank you.
No, pleasure. Um, and I guess I'll take this opportunity to share a little bit more about our upcoming events calendar. There has been some changes uh that have been made since the previous calendar was shared. Um, so I actually have this here if I'd like to share, that I'd like to share with the, with everybody. Um, but basically, some of the, um, I guess with the goal in mind to increase the footfall, uh, raise the profile of the precinct, um, and really engage the community. Some of the events that were previously on the calendar just didn't really speak to that. They were a little bit smaller and required a lot more capacity. Um, so some of the events that have been removed, uh, and again, simply just due to their their smaller size, um, have been the Gin Switch, Torma Tapas, Kitchen the Switch and the Lane Way Speak Easy events. However, what we have done is really tried to um strategize and focus and and keeping those goals in mind. So what we've done is replaced those events with some, uh, really focused on our school holidays, our markets, and also our pop-ups and activations. So in terms of school holidays, we have some great, uh, big brand-name stage shows that we'll be be introducing, um, and they will be both the uh June, July and September Oc- Oc- October holidays. And they are things like, um, uh, you know, PJ masks and things like that. So really big, high-profile uh performances that will attract a larger audience. Uh, our markets continue to grow as well, so our handmade market will continue throughout the remainder of the year. Uh, but one change I do want to mention is the Future Flavors event. So that was our food trucks event that was held on a Saturday night. Now, thankfully, well, but, uh, the June nineteen clash. So current, the first event was uh scheduled for June nineteen, which actually clashes with the Ipswich Cup. So we've discovered that pretty early. A lot of Ipswich wants to attend that, we have noticed. So we're taking that opportunity to really uh reposition that event. Uh, and of course, with the activation of the council building, uh, the new CBD footfall, we're going to take that opportunity. We're going to cancel it for the June event, and we're going to come back really strong in July. Uh, we're going to come back on a Friday night as well so that we have, we can catch that CBD uh market. Uh, and we're going to reposition the name as well to, again, really solidify things, and we're just going to come back with the Ipswich Twilight Market. So that is currently in place, and I'll have all of the creative and communications for you shortly. But I think it's a really good opportunity to, again, stamp the destination and and really create that community awareness. Uh, and also as well, we have, again, with our big-name events, we have the Olympics as an Olympic live site, uh, and also Galvanise too. So, again, we're really trying to switch away from those little piecemeal events and just increase the footfall, increase brand awareness and uh get some PR opportunities as well.
Okay. Um, can I just ask how we're going with stakeholder engagement and management down there? Obviously, our longstanding uh business owners
Yes.
who've endured uh years um
They have, yep.
of of pain and and certainly disruption um in recent times. How how are we going?
Yeah, look, the, I think the temperament and the sentiment is um is really encouraging at the moment. Uh, what we've done is start a really concise and consistent communications with them. So we do uh have a newsletter that goes out to them monthly now, and that's a a way to have a a two-way conversation with them. And they, they're kept up to date with with our uh actions and activities. Uh, and we're also instigating quarterly stakeholder meetings, uh, which will commence, we've just had to change the date, but they will commence uh in the first week of July as well. Um, so there'll be a quarterly event, and again, just to open that dialogue and uh incorporate a two-way conversation.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. So if we move to the recommendations, A, that the Nicola Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Events monthly report be received and contents noted. Uh, and I I note B then will not be um relevant, so we're just having the one recommendation, A. Could I have somebody move that recommendation, please? Thank you, councillor John Ink. Um, and a seconder?
Thank you, councillor Milligan. I will open up for discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Who cares about the weather when you've got the State of Origin on? My husband and I loved it last night, and I think it's actually part of the atmosphere, the the six weeks of winter that we probably get in Ipswich. I think we embrace it. Bring your beanie, bring your scarf. There were tons of heaters. Um, the wood fire pizza, um, food truck was actually a business from from Goodna. Um, so it was lovely. But the other thing I liked last night was the fact that because the space is so disability-friendly, and and other the tables I saw people had with with wheelchairs, so though it was just, you know, so it's another aspect to the the venue, which I think is really great for for families. It's a very inclusive space, um, huge screen. It was a good atmosphere. And yes, lots of heaters, which was great. Um, but yeah, it was a really good good time, and it's great to see how this space is being utilized in different ways, and I'll be there for the second game, and hopefully we'll win that one.
Here, here. Um, just like to make a comment, I guess, um, around the um events that are occurring um down uh within Torma Place going forward and and noting the comments that the schedule's just been rejigged slightly. I love the idea that we will activate um with some huge performances. Um, but just want to emphasize um the importance along with professional performances that, you know, we continue to invite our our smaller community groups, uh, dance troops to perhaps um as a bit of an opener to those bigger acts. Um, when we talk about, um, you know, attracting uh new new residents, you know, that haven't quite experienced our space down there, each time we have a different group down there performing, whether it was Ipswich Circus or one of the dance troops, you do get to see different groups of families that obviously attend to watch their kids perform. So it is a great way of marketing our space and advertising to the wider community because I do know there are some in the community that um still thinks possibly there's a woolworth sitting at the end of that mall there. So, uh, thank you for your good work. But, um, on that note, there is nothing further. There's no notice or notices of motion. Did we not put that to the vote? Um, we'll put that to the vote then. All those in favour? Confirmed? Carried? Uh, no notices, notices of motion, no matters um arising? And we will close at, uh, three forty thirty-six. Thank you. Thank you.